Thank you. Welcome to the meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Tahoe Truckee Unified School District. Today is September 15th, 2021. We're on our second week of school. Yay. So excited to have everyone back in the classroom. The Board did meet in closed session this evening and took no reportable action in closed session. Would you all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with good reason and justice.
Thank you so much. Superintendent Geisels, do we have changes to this evening's agenda?
Yes, President Zurich, we have one change. We would like to pull Agenda Item 13.1, Instructional Leadership Team Presentation. We would like to bring this back next month when we look at our CASP testing data.
Thank you. Okay. Would anyone like to move approval of the agenda with that modification?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda minus 13.1.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Next, we get to hear an update on our district from our Superintendent Chief Learning Officer. Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? I blew that. Next, we have public comment. We have public comment on anything that's not on this evening's agenda. Do we have any public comment that came electronically?
No, we don't have any public comment.
And anyone in the audience? It's so nice to have audience. And we don't really have cooties. You could actually even be up here. Okay. Now, we get to hear from our Superintendent Chief Learning Officer.
Thank you, President Zurich. So, just a moment while we get the presentation up. Thank you very much, Lupita. So, we started school, and we're really excited. So, is it Lupita? For some reason, it just kind of... Thank you. Okay. So, I want to thank all of the TTUSD staff who made this possible. Everyone had a huge part in this. Our teachers, our classified personnel, our nurses, our principals, our assistant principals, our directors, our coordinators, everyone, our food service folks, our custodians, everyone had a hand in this. So, thank you so much. Can I get a round of applause for our staff? And of course, we have to thank our families for hanging in there with us. You are rock stars, and we so appreciate your patience, your survival instincts, your input. So, another round of applause for our families out there. And to our board, thank you for always being there for us and guiding us along the way and for the wonderful gifts that were given to each of the school sites. Thank you, Ms. Lavock, for that. So, I'm going to ask you to help me do a butterfly putt. Applause. So, here are some great photos of school in action. And it was amazing and so wonderful to see folks in action this past week. But one question I have been receiving from parents was, we had a delay of start of school this year, and we did delay for four days. We started on September 7th, and the reason was because part of our district boundaries was located in a mandated evacuation zone due to the calendar fire. So, we had about 100-plus families, which also included staff, employees, our classified, even some of our principals that were affected. So, these five extra days were built into our academic calendar for our students. As you know, our students must receive 180 days of instruction, and that's state law. But what TTUSD does is it builds in five extra calendar days each year because we anticipate snow days. So, one thing about these five days is you could also use them for smoke days or days that we need to close. So, if we have any massive smoke days or snow days, I was recalling that there was a year when there were 12 snow days. That was amazing. If we exceed these, we do have the ability to request a waiver from the state. And then, I'm tag teaming with my Executive Director, Student Services, and we're going to be talking about, we're back in school, but it's COVID still, and it's unfortunately our new normal right now for at least a little while longer. So, we have masking requirements that are universal. And Mr. Santos, do you want to talk about these masking requirements?
Yes, I can. So, yes, since the start of the year, well, everyone that's been following COVID, there's a lot of changes that have taken place over the last several months with guidelines. So, we've been getting a lot of good questions from our parents and communities. So, I'm hoping that through these next few slides that we can answer those, starting with masking. Just a reminder, masking is mandatory for anyone and everyone indoors on any TTUSD campus or building and transportation, and that includes visitors as well. Masks are optional outdoors according to CDPH, and based on that, we are not mandating that for our students or staff. If they choose to wear it, that is totally fine. If a parent would like their child to wear it outdoors, that's fine as well. We're just not in a position to police that, for lack of a better word.
And we do know that CDPH has announced that in November, they're going to reevaluate everything. So, we're waiting to see what changes might come up with that, and we will follow those changes. And then, we've had some COVID-19 cases at school so far, which is understandable. There is a worry that we would escalate, and I've talked to several superintendents who districts have started a month prior to us, and they did have experienced the same thing where the cases did escalate, but they're coming down now. They're coming down, and they're starting to come down. But we do have quarantine and isolation protocols that we're following in our schools. And Mr. Santos, would you like to discuss those?
Yep. So, as far as quarantine and isolation, I just list there what are the options. So, symptomatic individual is someone that has to quarantine. I'll get into that in a second. If you test positive, it's isolation still. And then, unvaccinated asymptomatic, close contacts have to quarantine, which I'll cover in a sec. Quarantine rules, though, are still the same. No extracurricular activities while you are in quarantine. That's just to prevent the spread. Always wear a mask, and that includes outside as well, which I'll talk about in a bit. Minimize your trips out of home and out of school. I think that's sort of a maybe a no-brainer for some, but you'd be surprised how many still go to large functions, parties, and that sort of thing. So, really trying to remind the community to steer clear of that during your quarantine time and monitor yourself for symptoms. And the last bullet is really, obviously, try not to share any of your food and drink and beverage and all of that stuff.
So, the one thing that we are following is quarantine procedures and isolation protocols for vaccinated and unvaccinated students and staff.
Yeah. So, since the vaccine rolled out, they've made shifts to this. So, I'm just going to cover both for you. So, a vaccinated individual does not have to quarantine if they've been in direct contact with someone who tests positive for COVID. They are, though, however, required to quarantine if they're symptomatic, and then, of course, isolate if they test positive. If they are unvaccinated and they are asymptomatic, you still have to go through what they call a home quarantine for 10 days. There is a modified option, which I'm going to talk about in a second. And then, of course, if you're symptomatic as an unvaccinated individual, you still have to quarantine at home for 10 days. If you're on... I can go dive into this. Okay. You'd like to believe that all of our students at all times are masked, but there are situations when students are not masked. So, for anyone who is considered unmasked, basically, whatever your vaccination status is, and you're a close contact with a positive case, you're automatic 10-day quarantine at home. There's a clause, if you will, which I'll cover in a little bit. But in short, you can return to school after day five if you've gotten a negative COVID test, and you can return after day seven, which sounds kind of confusing, but the idea is to get students back in school quicker if they've gone through the measures to show that they are not carrying COVID, if you will, and they're trying to be mindful of that. This year, they actually, CDPH came up with this mostly to help students remain in school, not have students out of school for length of time. So, they came up with what they're calling a modified quarantine. Why we are calling it an in-school modified quarantine is quarantine, you typically think of being at home. This is basically in school and allowing students to remain in school. This pertains to students who have not been vaccinated, who've been a close contact of a positive case while at school. And this rule allows students to remain in school for 10 days under this in-school quarantine, and during that time, they have to get tested a minimum of two times per week, have negative tests, of course, wear your mask at all times. That includes outside, cannot participate in extracurricular activities, and then, of course, be asymptomatic and not having any symptoms during that time. It is for 10 calendar days, not school days. Extracurriculars can resume on day 11 under this modified quarantine. I do want to note, though, that they announced it late in the summer, and schools throughout the state, including our own county, are reporting that they're not up to speed, if you will, on the modified quarantine due to what is required of schools. And I'll share that here in a second.
And please note that this in-school modified quarantine is only offered at our high schools at this time, only for our high schools.
Yes, that's correct. And I think that's on... And it's a slide coming up, but yeah. So, here, the next slide is basically going through what the requirements are for an in-school modified quarantine. And again, failure to adhere to these rules does result in the student having to stay at home for the remainder of their quarantine. CDPH is very clear about that. I do, again, want to highlight extracurriculars is on this list, and that includes sports, music, anything outside of school.
And again, what we will be doing is posting this information on our website because it's a lot, but we have moved from 14 days to 10 days. So, we're excited about that, and we're excited to try the modified quarantine in school for our high school students.
Yeah, which is this next slide. We, as a district, went with the high school population for this in-school modified quarantine for a number of reasons. One, it's our largest population of students who have had the vaccine, so we're not dealing with, knock on wood, a lot of students that have been unvaccinated, number one. Number two, the majority of our high school students are in sports, and they already have to be tested once a week anyway, so they're familiar with that process. Number two, those that have been unvaccinated, if they have to go home, we're trying to prevent any sort of singling out these students and protecting their privacy. And so, by allowing them to remain in school does not point them out in that regards. And then, the last is the social-emotional piece. Students that have not been vaccinated, and they're sent home when their peers are in school. Obviously, that's going to be somewhat of a traumatic experience for some when their friends are at school and so forth. We are looking at expanding this to our middle and to our elementary schools once we receive our testing materials and we're cleared by the state to start doing that.
Jeff, may I ask a question related to that? So, just to be clear, it doesn't call them out by sending them home, but they are in a different physical space.
That's correct. Yep. And we actually did have a couple of students that emotionally were like, this wasn't necessarily my decision. My parents are the adults, I'm the minor. They chose not to have me vaccinated and therefore, but I don't necessarily want to be singled out in front of my peers, so this definitely helps in that regards, too. And yes, they're in a different setting, not in school. That's the big reason. The next slide is, if you do recall, the testing that we had last year at Rideout, that was a sponsored testing center through the county, which we did not have a waiver for. So, basically, the county operated that. That is no longer an option. So, schools are either forced to come up with their own testing at their school sites within their district or contract out our district. Because we're a singleton district up here, we are going to be doing and conducting our own test. We're in the process of getting those tests and certified by the state. Once we are certified by the state to administer those tests in schools, we can start exploring the modified option for our middle school and for elementary school students as well. Kind of mentioned that one thing on the testing front I want to announce to the public. There is a high need for tests and a very low inventory. All of the schools that have ordered tests through the state program are all in back order. Last, I'd heard that the state is releasing tests that were ordered the week of August 20th. So, districts that have ordered after that are just in line to get those tests. So, I just want to point that out to folks. We will not be testing for surveillance or visitors or any close contacts within the home. It's only students in school and our staff.
And last but not least, our COVID reminders. We ask that you please do not send your child to school if they are sick. Also, please don't send your child to school if they have any COVID-like symptoms. Some of our cases that have happened in our schools have been that children have come to school with symptoms. If your child is in quarantine, please ensure that they follow the quarantine rules so they can come back successfully. And also, please be patient. And I say this on behalf of the nurses, the community liaisons, the school principals, the assistant principals, the secretaries, everyone that is contacting parents. Please be patient, and please, I respectfully request that you practice the civility with our staff in event your child needs to be quarantined. It's an emotional phone call, and they're also emotional because they're trying to give you the news as professionally as possible. And also, to adhere all to the COVID mitigation measures and COVID, be COVID responsible at all times, whether you're practicing athletics, whether you're at an extracurricular event, we still have to wear the mask, even though it's hot, it's frustrating. But if we all work together, we can get through this. And we also want to welcome back volunteers. We are really trying to make sure that our parents, our staff, and our students are safe. So, we have a new volunteer process this year that involves vaccines. We are asking all volunteers to go through a process before they can actually come and work on campus, and this includes being a parent driver. That's very important to note. So, if you would like to volunteer, please talk to your site principal. Please let them know that you would like to volunteer, and they can support you through the application process. And that is all I have for this evening. I know it's a lot. Again, we'll post the information about the quarantining protocols, and we'll give an update on when we get our tests from California Department of Public Health. And I'd like to personally thank Jeff Santos and the nurses for all of the work they've been doing leading this. So, thank you again.
Thanks to both of you. And I would just like to reiterate the civility piece. I've been talking about kindness ever since COVID started, and we definitely are seeing that stretched and tested, frankly, mostly by parents, if I'm honest. And so, let's just try to remember that everyone is always trying to do their best and always focused on what's best for the kids. And if we can just keep that in the forefront during these emotional times, it'd be very helpful. So, thank you. Any other board thoughts or comments?
Only comment I was going to make is that I want to just say what Carmen had said about our... Jeff, your team and your persistence with all this. It has been noted everywhere that we are sort of above the curve in terms of how we're handling it. And we want to also, I would like to also publicly thank your wife, because I'm sure she never sees you, and we do, but honestly, it has made a big difference for our team. And I think that we're here, and we're definitely riding this wave, partly because of all of your efforts and your dedicated to the pivot, which is not a bike. Thank you.
We'll move on to the consent agenda. Would staff like to pull any items from the consent agenda?
No, President Zurich, we do not.
Would any board members like to pull any items?
No.
Would someone like to move the consent agenda?
I will make a motion to approve with a comment on the consent agenda. I apologize for not making this comment earlier, but I just wanted to shout out to Joan and her team for, if you look at the Consent Agenda Personnel Report, there's a lot of added names. And we sent it from the time we started last month to filling in some personnel that was missing. And I don't know what she's done or how she did it, but I really wanted to say hats off to the number of people that have signed on this Personnel Report. It was a lot. I was just looking to see the numbers. But really happy to see that we've got some new and smiling faces on our report. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve, unless you have another comment.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know how I was asking? Okay. I had a question.
Do your microphone.
Yeah, sorry. I'm sorry. I meant to email this before the meeting. I just have a question about, I don't know procedurally how to, but I'll trust that you'll guide this. The consent agenda somewhere on here, the community service hours requirement. So, I don't remember this coming forth to the board before. I just had a concern about the hours.
So, it did come to the board, oh, I don't know, was board initiated maybe five years ago when we put this in place and discussed the number of hours, et cetera? And it also did come before us last year when we did the modification not requiring last year's seniors to complete their community service hours?
I do remember that, but I guess specifically what I'm asking is for it to be on the consent agenda this, tonight. Because are these numbers, have those numbers been revised because of COVID?
Yes.
And so, that was I...
So, if I can add, Ms. Tennessee, that the numbers have been revised because of COVID, because we're one more year in the impact of it, that Ms. Simpson has been working with the site high school principals.
Yeah.
And they came to a number which was a gradual release. We don't want to give up the community service hours. We want to continue that. But we also have to be considerate that there are community agencies and facilities out there that do not, they're not quite ready to have volunteers for service hours. So, we're just kind of working through that until it's, you know, safe again to do that.
So, I guess what my question was going to be, if I would have pressed send, is I feel like the bar is too low. Not maybe for this year, but I mean, you can, I just feel like these numbers are low, and I'm not versed, I'll admit, in what colleges are looking for, or even if they look for it anymore. But some of these numbers are low for next year and the year after, I think. I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull it up.
So, what we can do is revise those accordingly, but right now, colleges as well are revising their requirement for community service hours. So, I think if we get through this year, maybe we can come back and with the principal's input, present to you what we think might be reasonable for the following year and the year after that. We don't want to...
Yeah. I mean, I'm looking at 2023 numbers, and we're requesting or requiring eight hours. That's, I feel like that's a low bar.
So, what you're asking, Chris, is can we revisit this in total in regards to throughout a student's high school career, how many volunteer hours they should be required to complete for graduation? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think so, yes. I mean, my gut instinct is, okay, so 2022 was waived. Okay, I understand. I mean, we don't know what next year is going to be like, but then to go eight hours in '23, 16 in '24, that just seems low. And I guess, yeah, I don't think I need to discuss, like, I don't want to brainstorm out loud because I'm kind of pulling a thing at the last minute, but I feel like these numbers, eight hours in 2023 seems low.
So, I think what she's asking, though, Kim is asking if I'm not mistaken, is are you pointing us to come back to revisit it? Because this isn't the place to revisit it. But if this is how you, at this point, in order for us to process this moving forward, you have, do we have to clarify that?
Right. We have a short-term issue and a long-term issue. So, the short-term issue is what we're requiring for this school year. And it's proposed that we're requiring eight hours for this school year. We had zero last year.
Well, for this school year, I'm not seeing any numbers. The first numbers here are 2022, and they're waived.
So, this year, there are no community service hours, correct, Ms. Simpson?
Correct. Correct. There are no community service hours required for '21, '22, which is our graduating class coming up. And that's because we're now one and a half, almost two years now of being in this state of COVID impacting school. And so, I know, like, the principals took a look at, like, okay, the graduating class of 2023 potentially will have three of their four years impacted by COVID. And so, if you divide 30 hours by four, you come up with, what, seven point something hours a year? And so, that's how they came up with the calculations and just kind of rounded it up. So, basically, what they're asking for this 2022, '23 year is that, let's keep our fingers crossed, their senior year is going to be 100% normal, and they're going to have full access. Because, like the superintendent said, many of those places are not even open right now, and so it makes it really hard for the students. And we can definitely revisit this. So, let's say we move through halfway through this year, and it looks like things are looking really good. We can bring this back and say, okay, we want to, you know, increase it to 12. Or, you know, it is definitely not the goal of the principals or our department to reduce that. It is just to make it attainable for the students in light of all these conditions we're under. So, it's a great, it's a great point, Chris. And I know that the principals wanted to bring it this way so that they could provide certainty for the kids moving forward and just, you know, try to take a little bit of, you know, that long-term stress and anxiety about their community service hours. So... Yeah. It's, you know, let us know, you know, let me know, and I can work with the principals if you want to revisit, you know. I don't know if there's a way to approve part of it. I don't, or we, you know, I don't know.
I guess back onto this, I think I'm looking at the, in terms of accepting the consent agenda, the reason it got onto the consent agenda, was this something that we as a board decided the number of community service hours, or was this something that... So, if this was coming back to the board as an action that we, but did we, have we seen these numbers prior to this?
No.
No. So, is that the question you're asking? Is this the...
So, I was surprised to see it on the consent agenda, because my understanding of the consent agenda is we discuss something or we're educated on something that we're to consider, and then it gets on the consent agenda for us to vote on. So, maybe I misunderstand that.
Well, and Carmen and I just made the decision that it wasn't so atypical or out of our normal business that we included it on the consent agenda.
Okay.
So, obviously, we've pulled it basically now off the consent agenda. So, I'm still confused where we're taking this, though.
Right. So, okay. So, I'm not trying to dictate. I just, when I read these numbers, I was surprised at how low the bar is for community service, right? Because one of the... I'm just, I'm trying to... So, one of the things that we teach the kids is, you know, to be part of their community, to, I just feel like these numbers are low. That's my bottom line, and I didn't know, I guess I don't recall what to compare them to. I understand not doing community service this year. Maybe next year, I could understand that, too. But then, also, truly, my confusion is, is that I asked North Tahoe High School for what we were doing about this for my own student, my own child's situation, because she did community service hours over the summer. And I was sent the paperwork. So, I was under the impression that we were doing it. So, number one, and number two, I feel like those hours are low.
So, if I can make a suggestion, let's pull it from the consent agenda item and bring it back as an info and action item, and we can talk, we can present more information then.
Yeah, thank you, because I feel like I'm missing education or something. I mean, I don't, yeah, thank you.
So, we are going to table that item. Would someone like to move the balance of the consent agenda, which is our Personnel Action Report?
Correct. So, I will make a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And thanks, Chris, for the thoughts on that. And I will echo that I have a deep commitment to requiring the volunteerism in the community. I think we've made that obvious when we set this up. So, thank you. Appreciate that. Next, we get to hear two presentations, the first of which is from our new Friends of the Truckee Library. I think that means a new presentation from the Friends of the Truckee Library, right?
Well, they're new friends to me, but they feel like old friends. So, I have the pleasure of introducing our liaisons, our wonderful people from our Friends of the Truckee Library presentation. If you would like to come up and introduce yourselves and get started. And it's been a pleasure getting to know you via Zoom, and a big pleasure seeing you in person for the first time.
So, now we can touch this. Yeah. Well, thank you so much. I'm Louise Zabriski.
Is the green light on?
The green light's on.
And then, if you need a little clicker, Louise, it's the one to the right that goes that way to go forward.
Okay. Thank you.
And is this for the slides?
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to move this to your side.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Louise.
Okay. I'm Louise Zabriski. I'm president of the Friends of the Truckee Library. I'm president of the Friends of the Truckee Library, and with me is Kathleen Egan, board member. And we really appreciate having this opportunity to share with you our community's vision for a new library facility.
Our objective this evening, can you hear us? I'm not sure with the mask. Good. Our objective this evening is to give you a brief look at the Library Up Community Outreach Initiative. We've been operating this initiative for about the last several months, and we want you as elected officials to have a firsthand look at the message behind the vision of this new facility. We wish to give you a sense of why this project is so important for our community and especially our students of all ages.
Whoops. Sorry. Okay, I've got to go back. Oh.
I thought Lupita's going to help. There we go.
Oh, thank you, Lupita. Okay. So.
There we go.
Got it.
So we've clearly grown a lot from 1975, a population of about 2,000 today, to over $20,000 in our whole region, Truckee and the Marthis Valley.
20,000 people, not dollars.
20,000 people.
Not dollars.
And yet, our library has not grown in that time. It doesn't begin to have the space to meet our needs for services and programming. Modern libraries build community and programming as varied as the people who frequent the library. Busting the myth that libraries are just for books. Properly sized, they facilitate human connection, which we all know about with COVID. We know how critical that is. So what are other small towns doing?
Why?
There it is.
Okay. Sorry. I am a college graduate, but have a little trouble with technology sometimes. So first, Steamboat Springs, a mountain tourist community like Truckee with a population just under 14,000, has a 35,000 square foot library. It's a warm, welcoming place, an interactive building. It's like an extended living room, a place somewhere in between school, home, and work. The library has become one of the premier assets in this town. And if you can believe, on an average, they have 1,000 people a day visiting that library.
That's pretty amazing.
Yeah.
Oh, we just skipped one, Louise. Don't worry about it.
Okay.
There we go. So Half Moon Bay. We know where Half Moon Bay is. Three years ago, they built a 22,000 square foot facility in Half Moon Bay. City officials described this library as being transformative in the community. It has become the place where people go, whether it's for meetings, for interviews, or just to hang out between soccer games.
Building a connected community requires space, the right space, inspiring space, comfortable space, definitely flexible space. There are few places in our community, other than private homes, bars, or restaurants, where people can meet. Modern libraries have spaces that enable people to act independently, collaborate, and/or create connections at no cost. Libraries help build the very social fabric of communities by providing places for people of all ages, walks of life, to meet in groups, large and small. The most successful modern libraries have space for programming that is at the very core of creating an active community hub. That programming can be as varied as the people who use the library, from toddlers to school-aged children through teens, all the way to our senior citizens.
Our chamber refers to growing our own as provide, that's okay, Louise, as providing opportunities for locals to live, work, and thrive in their hometown.
Sorry.
Libraries are a place for people to seek employment, resources, and support. Several of our special districts see this new library as an ideal central location for information on career possibilities and job promotion, with adequate space for job training programs and resources. Both the PUD and the airport district have specifically talked about their need to provide job information and certification classes for our locals to take advantage of some of the very good and well-paying job opportunities that exist in those special districts.
Our children need an exciting, engaging place to, for the array of programs that are currently offered by our library, well, or were before COVID, but, so, with enough space to accommodate our growing community. In the past, parents have said that they have chosen not to attend some of the special events in the children's room that are so popular due to overcrowding and not being able to see. Our teens need a free, welcoming place to study, connect, collaborate on projects after school, or maybe just a place to hang out with their friends. Lynn, a teacher at ACMS, attended one of our presentations, like this one, and said she would assign more collaborative projects for her students if she knew there were safe places for her students to meet. Many students aren't comfortable inviting other students to their homes for a variety of reasons. A library with adequate space and meeting rooms will solve many of these issues.
Libraries are these...
I'm, I'm, I'm working on it.
Don't worry about it, Louise. It's okay.
No, it won't.
There we go. So libraries are the civic institution designed to serve every age, income, ethnicity, or physical ability. And it's free. As the disparity in our community continues to grow, the library is a place where we all are welcome, no matter our circumstances. Library programming looks to serve the needs of every segment in our society. Libraries also partner with social services and other agencies and providers to help meet those needs.
The overarching theme with this initiative, okay, I've gone, do we have, okay. Through, though a vital, through a vital partnership with our recreation and park district, a two-acre site at Regional Park has been set aside for our new 20,000 square foot library. Together, the town, the rec and park district, and the sanitary district, and PUD are working out the details of how to best approach land ownership intricacies on the site. I am always amazed at how our various agencies are willing to come together to achieve the great outcomes for this community. So why don't you do the overarching?
The overarching theme with this initiative is that we are working together as a community to bring this new library to reality. The primary collaborators to date on this effort are the Friends, Nevada County, and the town of Truckee. Placer County has been involved in some of our discussions, and we are beginning to see their interest in exploring the possibility of a regional approach to, to the delivery of library services. Friends has been presenting to your sister districts over the last couple of months, and the response has been very positive. All recognize the need for this new facility, and conversations are beginning on how other local agencies could be involved.
While many are involved, the primary collaborators to date on this effort are the Friends, Nevada County, and the town. Pla, okay, I've already said that. So funded by Nevada County? Yeah.
So funded by Nevada County. We jointly selected an architect and met weekly to develop conceptual building design, initial cost estimate, and renderings of the new facility. This has been a crucial step in bringing this vision to reality. This fly-through helps us imagine what this new space could look like and what it could feel like.
Yeah.
There we go.
Got it. The independent cost estimator has pegged the total cost at just under $25 million. Construction funding is expected to come from a variety of sources. The Friends is working with the county and the town to develop the governance and the financing structure for the new facility. Once built, the county will continue to fund operations.
So as you can imagine, this initiative is a multi-year objective. There are, these are the major steps. The Friends has developed and is implementing our regional education and awareness program, which is that top bar. And the county, town, and Friends have just completed the conceptual plans which you've seen. We are now jointly seeking proposals from consultants to begin, to begin, uh, help us fully explore a joint powers authority as the likely financing and governing vehicle. There are a whole variety of library JPAs throughout the state.
Once the JPA has taken shape, we will select the primary architect to begin the design to completion, including all the attendant studies and town approvals. These are the startup development tasks. Then will come the capital campaign and likely a bond measure. If all goes well, we could see this new facility open in 2026, which will be here in no time.
And we want you to know that community support for this new library is growing, as evidenced by our luminaries program. This initiative is distinct from a full-blown capital campaign, as it is designed to help seed fund startup development costs for the library.
To date, over 170 individuals, families, or businesses have shown their commitment by donating, donating $1,000 to become a library of luminary, or $2,500 to become a business luminary. Our luminary initiative dramatically demonstrates to elected officials, large donors, and grantors that this community is serious about, invested in, and committed to building a new library for Truckee. Truckee deserves and needs this library.
And you all know that Truckee has an amazing track record for doing great things, really great things. Some good examples are that, well, the school district, are you guys surviving COVID thing as well as you've done, really? But the legacy trail, the rec center, the Humane Society, the cancer center, it's really pretty astounding what this community does when it gets its, puts its mind to it. So together, we can build a library that will be a true cultural center for the community, and we can add it to Truckee's long list of achievements. It's time for us to dream big and ensure that our library is a true reflection of our diverse and amazing region.
Thank you so much for including us on your agenda today. We really appreciate your interest in the Library Up initiative and our collective efforts to bring this much-needed spacious civic institution to our community. And we're happy to respond to any questions if you have some. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies. I especially like the dogs who were part of the luminaries on your pictures. That's so Truckee. Board members, Galen, any questions?
I have a comment. This is wonderful. My, my perception of library, you could imagine, is a quiet place where you sit and look at a book. This looks more like a student union, or a community center, or library, I've been, I've been upgraded now, so now I know, I'd just say that's wonderful.
Thank you, Galen. That's great to hear.
Yeah.
You're exactly right. The student union is, that's a great comment.
Seniors may not like that as much, but...
That's right. Lifelong students.
Not that we're, we are lifelong students.
That's right. Yes, yes.
Well, one of the great things about a library, too, is that it really brings all segments of the society together. And so you're going to have seniors there, at the same time you're going to have teens and students there. So that's really, and you have the space for it, which is probably the biggest thing.
It, it is fascinating that Steamboat Springs, but even Half Moon Bay, other libraries, people come here and, and kind of wonder, but the people that have been used to going to a library that draws everyone in and offers every segment of your community, all ages, a way to come together and connect and collaborate. And I find, I think one of the most fascinating things is they truly are building social fabric in communities when we are so isolated from technology, because of technology, COVID, whatever, it's, they are becoming extremely essential institution, so. Thank you.
Other board members, questions?
Questions? DeeDee?
I have a question. I just have a comment. I just took a picture of your Steamboat Springs, because I have family there, so I'm going to send it to them and tell them that they made our board meeting. But I know, I think it's one of those things, I, and I, I keep bugging Jeff Santos, so in terms of the social, emotional support that all of our kids are going to need in different ways, and I think, I do like the, the, sort of the community center feel for it, but it's also the education, you know, student union or student learning, we're always learning, so I think that's a great aspect as well. But I think that in this time and place, that those are the things that we have, we took for granted for so long, and now they're kind of gone, and what a great opportunity to sort of jumpstart sort of a healing process. And I'm, I mean, I think at this, I think I like the way you kept saying space. It is a space, and I think that we all are looking for a space. But yeah, that's, I mean, I'm, I think it's a wonderful idea.
Thank you, Deanna.
I, I think one of our staff, Louise and Kathleen, would like to say something to you, Mr. Hilton?
Oh, thank you. Louise and Kathy, thank you so much for being here tonight, and I just wanted to say, I was just, as I was watching it, I remember Louise coming to my office when I joined as a friend of the library, like, I had to look back, it was back in 2015. And we partnered on an event together for technology, so I just wanted to say, I can't speak highly enough of Nevada County Library, as well as the Friends of the Truckee Library, and their support of literacy and students in our computer, community, especially digital literacy as well. And I also want to share another story of the Nevada County Public Library. They started a program, I've put it in some of my board updates, where we started with our high school students providing a library card where our students could check out books free of charge, no overdue fines, just open access to both physical books and digital books. And we had been doing that for a couple of years, and then, as you know, a year and a half, COVID came our way. And one of my first calls was to Bobby, the branch manager. She might have been doing another job at that time, I'm not sure. She was there, okay. And I asked her, I said, we need to have this access for all our students, like, now. And she worked it out, we changed the MOU, I sent her a list of all our students, every student in every county, because before it was, you know, just our high school students at Truckee High, North Tahoe High, all middle schools, all elementary schools, ready to go. And Nevada County has been a, a model for our other counties, and we're still working with Placer and Eldorado County to do the same and offer even more extensive access. But it was a lifesaver that we can continue our literacy initiatives the last 18 months because of the library and what you've done, so I thank you for that.
Thank you, Ed. That's a great story. That really, I knew that, but I didn't have the whole background.
Yeah, we've got a great library staff, and hearing that story really flushes it out. Thank you very much. Really valuable stuff.
Yeah, please let Bobby know. Thank you so much.
And I have a comment, a comment and a question, too. So like Galen, I remember libraries being silent places, but my mother took me to the Pleasant Hill Library and created a voracious lifelong reader, me, still. So it's cool that they have, it's, I expect it to be a community place, which is really great. As part of my role here, because we are three counties, I'm intrigued by the discussions with Placer County and including our Placer County residents, because we know a lot of them are on this side of the hill, and they have a little tiny library in Kings Beach, who, I'm not sure if it's, what its longevity is, or if Placer... who, I'm not sure if it's, what its longevity is, or if Placer has plans for that, but it sure would be nice to have this be a community-wide asset for our Placer County and even Eldorado County folks.
We actually met with the Kings Beach friends of, oh, we actually met with the friends of the Trucky Library from Kings Beach and the librarian from Tahoe City. And one of the things we were concerned about when we were first starting this is that we, Kings Beach Library is absolutely core to that community. I mean, it's right downtown, it's definitely small, it needs to be bigger, but it's, we wanted no way to affect negatively that. But they were very excited, thinking about working together, if, the Trucky Library could be almost like Madeline Helling is on the west side, the mothership of five other libraries. Trucky could be that, we're on the Tart Line, we're, we're, which is really one of the reasons that place was picked, is the location of the library in Regional Park. So now Placer County, Cindy Gustafson, they are interested in looking at possibly the ways of, they can improve services for all of the eastern region.
So one of the things they're doing along those lines, Placer County, is really because of Cindy Gustafson moving further along this idea of regionalism with regard to delivery of library services. And they have sent out an RFP and are looking at consulting services to really look at their entire library system countywide, and how well they are serving each of the communities, because each community is, as you know, is different. And so, and the people that they're looking at are really, have wonderful reputations in other communities, Seattle and Minneapolis being, too, where they really have done outstanding things and can help Placer, Placer County look at that. And then hopefully, we can get to regionalism in that, in order to deliver library services more effectively for our Trucky-Tahoe region.
Right. Thank you. It'll be an intricate JPA design to take that all into place. And I love the 2026 goal. That would be amazing. Well, thank you, ladies, so very much. Yes, please. Next, we get to hear a presentation of our K Ready and Summer School programs.
Yes. K Ready is a program that we are in collaboration with our district, with Tahoe-Trucky Reads and Sierra Community House and Kid Zone. And here to talk about our program that happened this past summer is Ms. Val Simpson. And Ms. Tara House.
Yes, thank you. So really excited to be able to share this with you tonight. This was a brainchild of Tara and Sierra Community House. I think Kid Zone may have been involved, Excellence in Ed. And this program actually started last year, so last summer was the maiden voyage, and it was so successful that we were able to secure additional funding to continue it. It is a program that not only starts in the summer, but it goes throughout the entire year. So without any more information, I want to introduce Tara. She has a lot of friends here tonight, so I don't want to steal the thunder. I also want to say, too, that the other part of what we get to present tonight is under summer programs. So although we don't explicitly talk about our Tahoe-Trucky Summer Reading Program, having Louise and Kathy here, and I need to also say how much I have appreciated our partnership with Nevada County, because we've worked together with Excellence in Ed and tried to really provide literacy opportunities for our kids during the summer. And Bobby and Perrette at that library are amazing rock stars. So, okay, now I'm going to turn it over to Tara.
I always got input that we weren't, Channel 6 wasn't having sound, so that's what they're trying to do.
Good evening. Thank you so much, board, and Carmen, for having me tonight. I'm super excited to talk about these programs with you. I have my phone up here because we had a parent, I mean, a prometora who was going to join us virtually to give her comments, which I would interpret, but her internet is failing. So she might text me her comments, and I will read them to you when she does. So, and we have another couple of prometoras watching online as well. So our K Ready program was a very exciting idea. We have such an amazing partnership with Tahoe-Trucky Reads. And one day Laura Brown asked, "You have this little bit of money. What ideas do you guys have?" And so I'll tell you what we did with that little bit of money. We had, last summer, not, not this past summer, but the summer before, obviously had to cancel our summer programs, with the exception of an EAL online program that we did for English learners. And then we had to also cancel our K Camp, right? And we knew that that is really popular and really helpful to, especially our students who've never had any schooling. So because of that, we decided we would work with Sierra Community House, funded by mostly Tahoe-Trucky Reads, funded by our district a little bit to support my work with that, and then provide something for the families. So we just had this big need with, with COVID. We had also a need within Sierra Community House for work for the prometoras to do. And we know that our prometoras are individuals who work within the community, mostly are mostly Spanish-only speakers, some are bilingual, and they really do that on-the-ground outreach. And with COVID, they really aren't able to do a lot of that on-the-ground outreach. So we wanted something that would involve them in the kind of work that they normally do. We wanted help getting families online, honestly, especially our Spanish-speaking families. And we wanted ways for families to connect with the district and also be ready for kindergarten. So this idea was just a brainchild of one of our meetings with Tahoe-Trucky Reads and our core group. And we decided to later on bring in the Kid Zone, because they had some employees that they were looking to give something to do. They actually paid their employees directly, so we did not fund those employees. So it worked amazing. Basically, my time was about $6,000. We just roughly calculated the time that I spent on it, Kid Zone employee time, and then the Sierra Community House kind of donated some extra time of their prometora coordinator. And then Tahoe-Trucky Reads gave us that $29,000 for the two years. What we did was I provided kind of an initial training, couple of hours with the prometoras on what this model could look like, how could they be a coach to parents? We talked a lot about what, what that looks like, what we do with coaching in the district, and how that could help parents open up, ask the questions, get the resources that they need. And the amazing thing about those prometoras is they, they know all of the resources, right? So they are super connected through the Sierra Community House, and same with Kid Zone, right? And it was a super amazing side benefit to see the Kid Zone and the prometoras collaborating each week. So after that initial training, we had a weekly meeting. And each week, we would talk about the things that they were teaching to their families that they were working with. They worked with between two and six families. They were all Spanish-speaking. They were all socio-economically disadvantaged. We focused on some of these topics that you'll see here, the influence of the family, social skills and promoting social skills at home, emotional control, you know, respect, executive function. These are all the things that we really want our kindergarteners to do and have when they come into our kindergarten classes. And these things are things that we really strive for when we did the in-person K Camp Summer School Program. Language development, obviously, sing, play, talk, this is core to our early childhood. We talked a lot about these ways to get parents involved. The parents also learned a ton about pre-reading skills. And then the amazing thing was the Kid Zone put together kits each month, full of art supplies, books, projects, and then they had these little projects to do. So these are some of the things that they sent us. We also gave books from Ed Services, backpacks that were donated to us, we got to those families. We just tried to keep giving them more and more resources. Somebody asked for whiteboards, we found whiteboards for everybody, you know? We, we just really kept trying to, to connect them to resources, so they would have things to do at home. We also really focused on getting parents into, our prometoras became experts on Seesaw. They became experts on Google Meet. They worked directly with teachers to find out what things were missing. We ended up continuing this program the whole year, going into all the kindergarten standards, all of the skills that are needed for this, for them to be successful, since these kids were missing so much personal interaction. We needed to build up those strengths in those parents. So as a result, this is kind of terrible, but we had promised to the parents as one of the carrots that they would get into our summer school program if we offered one the following summer. Here's the, the good and the bad of that. Out of the 24 participating students, 22 of them did not need summer school. So, so, but their parents still wanted it, because they really value the educational experience. So we did let a couple in, we did most of them, ask them to defer their spot to somebody who really needed it, but it was pretty amazing, the successes that they enjoyed. Yeah. So because of that, and because of Laura's connection with Campaign for Grade Level Reading, we were asked to present nationally at the conference for the Campaign for Grade Level Reading, which we did in July, in the middle of summer school. And that was great, that we, you know, felt very honored to collaborate with them around this project. And then just here are some quotes from the kids. We asked the prometoras to get some kid quotes, and they just, they loved their teachers, they call them maestras. They learned their letters. They liked cutting and painting, I know, I like to cut and paint now. The families, right? They really appreciated how much they learned and how much the kids were learning. I will say, the prometoras sometimes worked directly with the kids on pre-reading skills or fine motor or whatever, or even gross motor, and then sometimes just worked with the family or the parent. And they did it via text, via video chat, via everything you can think of. They were on the phone, they were just, you know, constantly reaching out. They loved the book bags and the things, the activity bags from the Kid Zone, and they just felt so connected. One side benefit is that they are still calling those prometoras. When they have a question, they call them, and the prometoras call me, or they call Maria, or they call, or they can direct those parents to Barbara or Maria, or whoever it is that is the person most likely to have their answers. So we were just over the moon with all of it. The prometoras also loved it. They had so much fun working with the kids. They really felt like they had an impact and were able to help families navigate a crazy year. When are we going hybrid? They would get that call. They'd call me. I'd ask Val. You know, it was a whole chain reaction, right? And they just, they also learned so much from our weekly meetings. Part of our weekly meeting was a mini lesson from me about something that you can do with your parent, the parents, to get them helping their children. And then part of it was them connecting with each other, checking in about what they tried, what worked well, sharing ideas, and then coming up with other, you know, things that they were thinking about doing. This, these were kits that were given out actually by the Sierra Community House, and they had like a little COVID kit with protection, and then they had a dental kit, you know? So it just was an awesome, parents just felt like they were, kept getting gifts daily, you know? And then the teachers who had those students, the, this, not this year's cohort, but last year's cohort, were very impressed with those kids. So we went and talked to those teachers and just felt like the parents were more involved, the kids knew more, came in more ready than they had before, and they were really able to like see the benefits of the program. And that's everything about our K Ready program. What questions do you have? For me, or Laura?
Yes.
The amazing Laura is here.
Questions? Board members? Comments?
Yes, Tara, thank you. Again, this looks wonderful. I see the numbers there, were they 30 individuals?
Overall, we had 30 participants, and then it, some stayed, some swapped out. So we had like 24 for the year.
And these are all like pre-pre-kindergarten age?
Yes. They were, they were selected out of areas as new to our district, so new to kindergarten or new to TK.
And what do you think the demand is? I mean, we have, you had 30. And if you said, how many should be here?
I think for last year, we really, that was as many as we could, as the prometoras could take on. And we didn't have anyone on the waiting list. We ended up calling every single, the, the limiting factor is, was that we only offered it to Spanish speakers, because our providers were all native Spanish speakers and very few of them were bilingual. So we did not end up offering it to English speakers. This time around, we're planning on bringing in some English speakers during the course of this, this grant.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead.
I, my only thought was the longevity plan, how do we, how are we keeping this going?
Yeah, good question.
Only because I love these things, and I think they're so wonderful, and then I'm like, okay, so now where do we get? So all you're going to do is ask Todd for a line item in the budget? Is that what we do? But no, I think it's great, I guess, I would love, and Galen was just saying how many people were there, expanding it to others.
Yes.
And then get, I think the, the biggest thing, the takeaway for me was that, I know you've done so much backwork in getting parents involved just as an educational process, like if you stay with your kids, there's more chances of, you know, learning and, and positives all around, that the fact that this seemed to be a, a different approach, as opposed to just having, coming to a meeting. We talk about giving people tools to be successful, a life jacket or lily pad or whatever. This, I think, is a new, a new way to look at it, so obviously hats off to the creativity. But again, my concern would be, how do we sustain this if it's being so successful? And then obviously expanding it to all the littles. I think, I think ride out, you guys should take over ride out. Sorry.
That's a good plan. We need a Trucky site, too.
As mentioned with, by Kathleen Egan in the library discussion, this community is so amazing in taking a german of an idea, thank you, again, you're amazing, and, and saying, "I have some money, and what's the idea in making a program like this?" It's just, wow. Wow. Thank you.
I wanted you to come up the whole time.
Thank you. I wasn't anticipating speaking, but I want to say, it was actually Tara had the idea. So while you were sharing credit, I would like to give credit where credit is due. As you know, Tahoe-Trucky Reads is a community effort, and this really goes back, I think this was, well, I know this was, it was a virtual meeting, June 2020, and I think we had our family resource partners, we had school district partners, community collaborative, you know, we were on the phone. And it was one of those moments where it was, fortunately, we had some funding, and it was, what are the needs? What resources do we have? And it was one of those forced opportunities where we had to think differently. And this, we were invited to speak at, and again, we, Tara, mostly spoke at the conference, which was virtual, on pandemic silver linings. And this was truly one of them. It was one of those opportunities where we were forced to have to look at things differently, and an opportunity arose. So again, really hats off to Tara. I'm excited that we've been able to help continue getting funding for it. As far as kind of short-term sustainability of the program, fortunately, we have some Um, as far as kind of short-term sustainability of the program, fortunately, we have some donors that are very excited by this project. I would say I would love to keep it, um, obviously, we'd love to look for, you know, longer-term, uh, funding and potentially taking it to scale since it has proved to be, or seems to be, um, a really successful project. So again, thank you. And I think it also just speaks to, uh, one of the strengths of our community, which is really that collaboration. Um, and as I said, just the various partners coming together, so. Thank you.
I, I do wanna, um, I did get a text from Rosio Gutierrez, who is a prometora and, um, also the lead on the prometora COVID team. So she just wanted to say that, um, she's Rosio. She works with Sierra Community House and was working with the project, and it was just beautiful, um, just to be, uh, a support to parents in such difficult times like this pandemic. Um, also just being able to refer them to services that they needed in the moment, um, in such an emotional moment. And also, um, helping families, uh, not only with their kids, but with things like rent, food, um, COVID prevention, even diapers, um, and much more. Um, so connecting to those families really connected, um, them to those, connecting her with those families really connected them to those services. Um, the most wonderful thing was working one-on-one with the parents and their children. It was such a satisfying experience, and thank you for the opportunity, whoever made it possible.
Nice. Thank you. And Tara, you have a summer school presentation also.
I do. Would you like me to go right into that, or do you have words?
Um, Tara, I just want to also too say that you've done a great job, um, empowering some of the, the Hispanic population in terms of, um, owning their own voices and whatnot. It's been fun to see some of the, the graduates of your programs in our district now and just in our community. But it's just fun listening to the, the number of people that have come through you that have had a voice, which we haven't had enough of. We haven't had it. So I think it's kind of a cool thing as well.
Oh, thank you so much, Tara. Before you get started.
Val wanted to say something really fast.
Yes, I, I wanted to say that, um, first of all, I'm really excited to be able to present the improvements to our summer programming because it's been something that we've been working on for several years. And through Tara's leadership and research and partnerships with community agencies, we have, we had a fabulous program that is gonna be, I think, a model moving forward for both elementary and high school. And I also want to say a special, special shout out to, to both Tara and Krista Strecker, um, because they were the summer school coordinators this summer, you know, coming off of that crazy year. And then an even more shout out to all the teachers who, despite that year, were like, darn it, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this, we're gonna like hang in while we're figuring this plane out as we were trying to fly it, and they were so patient, and we, you guys rocked it. And I, I can't wait for you guys to see these results. So I'm gonna be quiet now.
Thank you so much, Val. Well, thank you for allowing me the opportunity. Before I get started, I do want to introduce, if you just stand up, Krista. Krista, you did an absolute amazing job coordinating over at Trekkie. Um, this could not have happened without one of us at each site, and I just appreciate you so much, and can't wait to come into your classroom this year. And then I did want to introduce Sue Beecham, if you want to stand up real quick. Uh, I know, it's, you're only you, but thank you. I really want to thank Sue. Um, Sue, I don't know what I would have done without you, Sue, because she stepped in at the very last minute and, um, took a teacher who was overwhelmed by the previous year and the prospect of the summer and just resigned at the very last minute. And, um, I had wanted to hire Sue from the very beginning, but since she's not, um, one of our regular in-classroom teachers, she's a substitute and has worked with us for summer school for years and years and just been amazing. So thank you, Sue, for, um, for stepping in. So, uh, the overview, today, we're gonna talk a little bit about the elementary Power Summer Program, the structure, the results, and then kind of what we liked and learned, and also the high school program credit recovery, same thing. We'll talk about the structure, the results, and also what we learned from this year. So, summer programming for elementary was called Power Summer. This is a take on Power Hour because it was a collaboration with the Boys and Girls Club. Uh, we had, um, looked into why, what, and how, and why we should change a little bit about what we're doing in the summer. We know that research does not support traditional summer school, and that is kind of what we have been offering. Um, even though we have enjoyed some lack of summer slide, we have not enjoyed the improvements that we would hope to see during summer, um, for our, our neediest kids. Um, so we found a couple of pilots, places that we're working with, maybe a Y, or, um, we didn't find one with the Boys and Girls Club, but with some, some part, community partners to provide a different kind of summer school experience. Um, there are some with libraries and some other ones. And, um, we knew that if we could provide a place for kids to be and solve some of our problems, we could do a better job. So number one is, um, our, our teachers, uh, had a really hard time working with small groups of students when they had a full class of kids who need summer school. So we have that many kids with that many needs, teaching an entire class is almost impossible, and then pulling into small groups. We know that small group instruction is key to summer school learning, and we couldn't get enough time for those kids, especially because they have only had a half-day. Additionally, a lot of parents couldn't participate in the half-day program. So by partnering with the Boys and Girls Club to take on some of that social, emotional, fun, team-building, learning, all day, right? If the kids were with the club and the teachers could really just focus on the intervention, the strategies that they need to catch these kids up in reading in small groups, we could maximize learning for the summer. That's the idea. So this way, they would get academics, they would get enrichment, parents can bring their kids because it's a full day, not a half-day, and they're struggling with daycare. Um, and also, the side benefit is they get to be part of the club, which sets them up to maybe stay in the club for the year. Their membership continues throughout this school year. So they have, there are several, many, many new members to the club that are staying on because of this program. So we had 120 students, 60 at each site. Um, we did have a few more than that on our teachers' lists because we, at the last minute, added upper grades. So we had to pull those kids out of what was already signed up for club due to the limit of numbers that the club could take for summer with COVID restrictions and staffing. We had to choose from whichever kids were already signed up for club for our upper grades. Next time when we implement, we can make sure and reserve those spaces for the kids that need it the most at all grade levels. Uh, the transportation was provided. It was a much lower need for transportation because kids were staying the full day, not that many kids wanted to leave on the bus. And then also, it was because it was at Kings Beach where the majority of our students live, and also at Alder Creek where the majority of our students who need summer school also live. So we didn't have to provide a ton of busing. It saved a lot of money in transportation. Um, we also, uh, provided the same amazing meals that we always do, CATS Team, just incredible, worked really well with us, following all of the COVID guidelines and everything. Um, I will say, this is not on here, but we did not have any cases this summer. It was kind of amazing. I don't know how that happened. Maybe they just didn't tell us, uh, but everybody was, no, I'm just kidding. No, we, we didn't have any, any sick kids, and, and it was, it was great. Um, full day, five days a week, five weeks. Um, and then what we did in order to help the club was we provided professional development to their staff. We also then had our teachers teach for one hour in their classrooms so that they could help that teacher and also learn from that teacher. We also had those teachers check in with the club staff to make sure that they were doing well, if they needed help with management or some of the other things, realizing that a lot of our club staff are 18 and 19 years old, and they're being asked to, to take a classroom of kids for an entire day, from eight to five. So it's big, right? Um, so that whole group lesson was, um, given to the teachers and with some specific strategies that we're working on within TTUSD, too. So it helped the teachers learn those strategies, and it helped the club staff learn those strategies as well. So the best part was, the teachers then, after their one-hour lesson, spent the next three hour, three hours pulling groups of five or six kids at a time and working on, um, literacy intervention, specifically the same literacy intervention that we are currently now doing with all elementary schools. This was to bolster some of the foundational skills that we know they're missing and that are research-proven for, um, intervention success. So we also had, um, instructional aids. Mostly the instructional aids helped with the social, emotional. They were the ones that hung out with the kids that were having a hard day, or made sure kids got to and from their teacher, or, um, connected with the club staff to just take a kid out of the class and on a walk if they were, they were having a hard time behaviorally. So, uh, they were incredibly valuable, um, but we did not actually have them like working on, uh, the academic skills because we left that to the professionals, to the teachers. And we had training for those teachers, uh, ahead of time based on the, um, work that they've been doing at Trekkie Elementary. And so Melanie Cook, who works there and has been doing that training, did that training with, um, with our teachers. So we, uh, I will say, these are great, we had 100% growth, like every kid grew in something. We did not do the star reading or star early literacy test during the summer. We wanted to maximize our time around this letters protocol that we've been using. So we did testing on three areas and then post-testing on those three areas. So that's what you're gonna see right here. Uh, these are the points of growth. Um, phonological awareness is a key skill for early literacy. So I will say that these numbers might seem a little bit random, only because I only took kids who did pre and post of that subject. For example, some kids tested out of phonological awareness from the very beginning, but they really needed decoding skills. So you'll, so those results might encompass those kids. These results encompassed just the kids who were working on this, these skills here. And then foundational skills, those are letters and sounds correlations, um, and some sight words and that kind of thing. Uh, so that, um, you can see our results there. Every kid who needed that, those skills, grew in those skills. And you can see which level they grew, just depended on, on the student. And then the decoding skills, oops, excuse me, the decoding skills, um, we really saw huge kid, huge growth with the kids that were low in decoding skills, um, kind of took off. So that was really neat. That, those kids that were looking at the decoding skills, they maybe already tested out of the phonological skills and had a lot of the foundational skills. So now they're really working on putting sounds together, words together in a sentence, and actually reading decodable texts. So this is actually reading. And it kind of goes with age. Um, I didn't break it out by grade level because honestly, we broke it out by skill for the kids, too. So some of the kids were in mixed grade levels, depending on what their skills that they needed, um, instruction on. So we're super happy with the results. Uh, the students loved it. They loved the whole group lessons. I heard a lot about it. They loved spending time working on skills. They felt really successful. Um, they absolutely loved the club and all of the activities there. They liked having a long day. They liked having social interactions. They really had been missing that, obviously. And then we all worked really hard to make it feel like a camp and just have fun. So we didn't have a lot of stress on them. They didn't have a lot of, you know, they didn't have any homework. They didn't have any work-work that felt like work. It was a lot of games and short spurts where they were really learning and having fun. We, uh, parents were so happy because we had the full day. They were also really happy that the kids were having fun and wanting to come. Um, and then they were, the parents who utilized the transportation were very grateful. And of course, the meals, we cannot say enough about CATS Team. Uh, our teachers raved. And in fact, some of the teachers at the beginning, when they were being trained, the letters training, which is not a program, but, um, a way of teaching and testing and looking at what kids know, what they need to know for reading, found, at first, they, they were a little bit worried about it. Some of our teachers that are teaching in Spanish were like, does this apply? Should we do this in TWI? Some of our teachers who had taught guided reading for a million years were like, well, I'm just gonna do guided reading. I know it works, you know? We were like, nope, we're gonna do this. Uh, Krista and Melanie did an amazing job organizing and presenting the letters curriculum to the teachers. And the teachers, once they started using it, saw the benefit. So that's kind of a cool side benefit. They were able to then roll into letters training this summer and coming into this school year with like a renewed enthusiasm for the, for, it's our program, but it's a, the philosophy, right? Um, and the teachers loved that they could spend more time with individuals or with small groups as needed. Um, and they didn't have to worry about the whole classroom management. What am I gonna have those 15 kids do when I'm with these five kids, right? And is it gonna be meaningful and not feel like a chore or horrible to those kids? Um, so they really love that. And then the group lessons, they thought were very engaging and helpful. Uh, they had a lot of academic conversations in them. So that, um, is one of the strategies we're trying to promote in the district. And overall, they just appreciated seeing happy kids that were with each other and liking school and being there. Um, we did have the library come, so just to like add more accolades to the library, they came once a week to Alder Creek and checked out books to every kid. And they also included the ESY packets. Come on up. Come up and say that again, so that, um, yes, please do.
This, this was amazing. Like they did, they came every single week so kids were able to like check out books, and it was like kids were super fired up on this. But then the last week, as like a gift to every single student in the program, they put together these like gift bags with like books for kids to take home, keep, it was theirs, like, um, uh, games, um, all kinds of like brain teaser kind of stuff, arts plot, like over the top. It was amazing, amazing, okay?
Thank you so much. Thank you. And we did also work with Placer County Library in Kings Beach, and the Boys and Girls Club staff took their kids to the library. And then the library also gave, um, all of the kids who were in our program, those 60 kids, backpacks with books on them as well. So they didn't necessarily check books out on those trips, they just read books in the library. But, um, hopefully, if we ever get to the point where they do the same thing as Nevada County, we can get that whole system going with the, every kid having an automatic library card. So yes, other outcomes, we definitely saw, they loved the enrichment. We had spirit weeks every week. This was a superhero week. We had, um, project-based learning every week in those whole group lessons. The staff, um, was amazing, the TTUSD and the Boys and Girls Club staff, and them getting to know each other and helping each other, really building up the Boys and Girls Club staff. Um, that side benefit of the letters training, and now we have those teachers who are out advocating for that to other teachers, the libraries, and then also the minimization of, um, the need for translation. This was a, I'm sorry, transportation. This was a quote, um, from an email that we got from a parent, just how much they
Who would have thought, seed cucumbers?
We, our themes were all animal-related for the summer in the elementary. Uh, so what So what we've learned is this had a huge impact on our learners. We feel like this is a great model for promoting that small group instruction. Our traditional summer school teacher duties were overwhelming. Every teacher that I had this summer said they'll come back. They loved it. Sue, did you love it? Yay! And just the partnership with Boys and Girls Club, the partnership with the libraries, and then access because we've really struggled having that half-day program. Yes.
Before you move into high school, this is another little piece I want to share, is I want to just do a specific shout out here to the high school, summer school coordinator, which was Kate Teller, who like Krista stepped in after a crazy year. And this was super impressive because this is truly like, okay, we are going to put this new program together and we're going to do it very quickly. And, and then we had the high school teachers who stepped in and again, just great results. A little quick history on this, we have been struggling with the impact of our Apex credit recovery of the summer program for as long as I've been in this position. And it's just like, what are we going to do? What are we going to do? What are we going to do differently? And this is what we came up with this year.
Thank you, Val. Absolutely. We had a huge success this year with high school's summer program. We, we did not expect it to be this great. We were a little worried right up until the day before we started. We basically, honestly, Kate Teller, a lot of this was her doing and her thoughts. We started talking about Apex and she really felt like it was just not accessible. There's no way to like modify it without taking out the part that's rigorous. And that was really frustrating to her and all of us because we felt like we're not, we don't want to water this down. We want the kids to really learn. However, we know we're going to need to support them. So moving away from Apex and bringing in a new curriculum or platform that had all the courses, all the courses in Edge Annuity are pre-built just like Apex, except they're completely modifiable by the teachers. So that is why we made the move from Apex to Edge Annuity, is we can tailor it a little better. If a student tests out of an assignment, we can get rid of that assignment. If a student, you know, shows mastery through a write, a piece of writing, then maybe they don't take a multiple choice test, right? We don't need every piece of that program. We allowed them to do this independently if they wanted to or to come and do this in person. We originally wanted to push everyone to come in person, but it was still COVID. We really couldn't do that. So we had to give them the option. We also wanted to allow kids who had started classes in Apex to finish those classes. So that was another factor. Oops, excuse me. So we had independent with Edge Annuity and then in-person with Edge Annuity Online were our main programs. They had, if they had independent, they had a weekly check-in with Kate Teller. If they had it with their teacher, they would have that daily or weekly check-ins as they were getting things done. Each student was working at their own pace. So for example, you can see in the courses, we offered math. That means all math. We offered, the math teachers at both sites offered whatever math class they were missing and then just worked with them, got them going on some, some work and then worked with another one, got them going on some work and then worked with another one and so on, until they got their credit recovered. So this was open to everyone who had ever had Ds or Fs and wanted to bring them up to a C. And referrals from teachers and counselors. Yes.
Yes, and I just wanted to add, wondering like, okay, why did we offer these courses, those four different areas? We actually used the data from the schools. They told us, these are the courses that are most in need of recovery. So we focused on these in specific, yeah, specifically in these.
And specifically last year. So which courses were failed during last year, probably because of online or hybrid circumstances where the students weren't successful. So we, we got the lists from the principals. We had English, math, and biology on the lakeside and then English, math, and world history, or, yeah, world history on the Alder Creek side. So that was around four days a week, half-days for five weeks with meals that they, kids could pick up. We did make that switch from Apex, like I said, and then we offered it in-person and online. And what we found was pretty incredible, online course enrollment and completion. So we had for online, overall, 85 students sign up to do courses online and 30 of them finished courses. So this is very telling. When we look at our next slide, our in-person courses, you can see we had 60 kids sign up for in-person courses, 46 completed those semesters that they were trying to complete. So we see huge difference. If we can get them there in person, we can get them across the finish line, they can do it, right? However, we are really proud of those 30 kids who managed to get it done on their own online with just weekly check-ins with Kate. And Kate was amazing. I have to say, we did robo calls, emails, everything, because I was her, one of her translators. So she was just, communication was excellent all summer. Parents really knew what to expect. And then, so this is over the years, summer 2018, we had five. The next summer, two more. The next summer, we had 14. And that's been pretty standard, you know, up to 10, 15 kids per summer recovering credits. This year, we had 76 semesters. Some of those are duplicate students who took two semesters or three semesters in some cases, very rare, but some did three. But we're really proud of those students. Oops. And what we learned, I mean, the impact on our learners was huge. If it was in-person, they were really well-supported. Our teachers were amazing. They really connected with the kids, really got them working and motivated to finish and to show up. We did not require them to be there if they were getting work done, even in the in-person. If they came, you know, maybe they came three days a week and they were jamming and they said, I'm going to Reno with my mom tomorrow. Their teacher say, fine, just keep going, keep working, you know? And they would. So the actual physical attendance varied depending on the kids, but we really called those kids in if they started slipping. So if they were falling behind at all, and Kate was amazing, just weekly reports to parents and kids, you have 14% of this course done, you have 24% of this course done, you're, you have 75%, and on and on, so that they could get it done. Oops. Questions for me, for Krista, for Sue?
Wow. That was an amazing presentation and really encouraging and, yeah, thank you. Galen?
Yes, congratulations on the credit recovery. My goodness.
Yes.
I mean, incredible. What have those students been doing in the past?
I know. I don't know.
The, the other group of students, 120, what grades were those?
The majority were first through third, incoming first through third graders. And then we had a few fourth and fifth grade students that we brought in at the last minute.
Okay. And the growth points thing, you, you mentioned that some of them were already proficient in or pretty good in phonics. So, so I think offline, I'd like to understand that growth point thing a little more like, who were those students?
Right.
And were the large number of zero to nine points because they already knew it? Or was it some other reason where we let them down?
Right.
But in any case.
It really, it was really variable and very hard to mine the data out of the, the assessments that we gave. What we would like to do is compare Star Reading and Star Early Literacy from end of year to beginning of year to really be able to show what reading growth there was or early reading growth there was. But since we did not use those tests this summer, we don't have that data today. So it, it is a little bit fuzzy. The cool thing was every single kid made growth somewhere on that assessment. So I, I was over the moon about that.
So some of those students, third graders maybe had, had end of the year assessments last year. So they'll get begin in a year or maybe already got them this year.
Right.
Can you, can, can you folks track those students?
We will. Yes, that is the plan. Those students, so they're supposed to be actually tested by the end of this week. We'll be starting to pull that data next week and the week after. As soon as I can, as soon as I have a minute in my schedule, I will pull it for our summer school students for sure, all of them. Because they all will have either early literacy or Star Reading from post, we'll call the pre is the end of school year and then the post is the beginning of school year.
Thank you, Tara.
Thank you. Board members?
Explain to me the difference between the credit recovery from this summer school versus what we do at Coldstream or at, no, at, well, no, at our, we do, Sierra High School, sorry, not Coldstream, but Sierra High.
Sierra High School offers their own in-house credit recovery. So a student can take as many classes as they want in a semester, depending on what they need to make up. And it's just part of their experience at Sierra High. But this program, that's why we had so few Sierra High students signing up, because those would be, because it didn't take advantage of that at Sierra High, maybe seniors or we just had a couple who enrolled. So generally, if they're at Sierra, they're already kind of built into a credit recovery system. With this program, it's really about the, the rest of the kids who need to make up work and we wanted to do it in-person as much as possible. We saw that like had a big impact.
So these kids normally would not have gone to Sierra High. They are just either at North Tahoe or at Truckee and we're just trying to grab them to be a graduate.
They may have.
Right.
They may have ended up there if they got to a point where they couldn't, they got too far behind. And so the difference is that in the past, we had our Apex Summer Program, which Greg Womack would oversee. And so this now, we've kind of shifted that a little bit so that we're offering these two different options. So yes, a lot of these students may have been, before recovering the credits, may have been potential students for Sierra High School as of right now.
Right. So imagine you're, you're a freshman and you failed biology. You could just make it up that summer instead of having to actually transfer to Sierra High to try to make that up. But if you didn't make that up over the summer and then failed another course and then failed another course, eventually you'd be so far behind, you would have to go to Sierra to get that, right? So it's a little bit of a safety net to have the summer, get them fixed, get those grades back up and get back on track. A lot of students needed it for eligibility. Maybe they got a D, they passed the class, but they got a D and they, they needed that C for, for eligibility purposes. So some kids did it for that. Some kids just, you know, knew that it was an opportunity and took it. So we have always offered this kind of semi-independent summer through Apex, but the combination of the poor platform of Apex and the independent nature of the program, we didn't have very many finishers.
So this will, in essence, it's supporting Greg's program in the sense that, I mean, I'm just saying, it seems like it's duplicate and I wouldn't want to take away from what Sierra High has already created?
No, 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 no. It's, it's supporting the students not falling further behind and it actually supports Greg's, the Sierra High School program because sometimes he gets impacted and it becomes a challenge to be able to offer some of the courses that the students may need. We also are providing this year, both, all, both of our big high schools have always held after-school credit recovery options for students. We're also, both schools have also added a section of during the day or during, like within the school day section that models a little bit like this in-person one we did in the summer. So really, it's about helping kids stay on track to graduate on time. Yep.
Yeah, it's not in competition with Sierra or Coldstream.
Right, okay. I just didn't want to think that it, like, okay, never mind. That sounds great. Thank you.
So both my questions were answered, but I just wanted to make a comment, Tara. Every single time you present, it just reminds me how under the radar you fly and how you lead with humility because your team cranks out work that is very, maybe not to Galen's standards of measurable, right? But I mean, success and effort and care for our kids' success. And that just says a lot about you as well. And I just wanted to make sure you got kudos because every single time you present, whether it's the K-Ready, Summer School, ELAC, DELAC, every single time. So thank you for everything you do for our district.
Thank you.
Under the radar.
Thanks so much.
And I'll just, I'll just conclude by echoing what Val said in the dedication of our teachers. And I know we were even worried about having teachers this summer because it was such a difficult regular year. So to all of the teachers, wow.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Todd, you have, you're going to have a, a hard time following that, those presentations. So we are going to take a look at our 2021 unaudited actials.
Thank you. Good evening. So I'll start off by saying this is my favorite part of the year because we're finally in the process, we're about this close to closing out the prior fiscal year. And now we can really move into 2122. I'd also like to thank Fiscal Services, particularly Angie Morales White, who really did the bulk of the work, closing out the books this year and in prior years and didn't have much of a summer because of it. So thank you, Angie, and also to their staff that supported her during the summer to try to get this done. It's a lot of work to try to accomplish in a very short period of time. We're always kind of have a leg in, leg out, two or three different budget cycles and it's tough sometimes with the deadlines. And I will try to be brief because I know we've had a lot of presentations tonight and most of the information I'm about to present, there's more detail in the narrative of the unaudited actials. So if there's any questions afterwards, you can feel free to email me on those. Just a quick reminder on the budget reporting process. We're required by law to approve the unaudited actials by September 15th. And then we go into our audit process, our external audit process, which the auditors will be pulling data and information from us on the week of October 20th. That's a lot later than we normally do it. I think everything's just fallen a little bit behind because of COVID. And then hopefully, they'll have that final report back to us in December, January to present that. And along the way, we'll have our interim, interim reports for the 2122 fiscal year. And then finally, budget adoption in June for 2223. Just a brief overview, how we ended the year. Total revenues, $80.8 million, which is a lot attributed to all the additional COVID and learning loss mitigation funding we received this year. Expenditures coming in at just $74.7 million. And just to touch base on our unrestricted fund balance, which is the fund balance that we want to see grow and be large, we're at $13.6 million. And that is an increase. I will explain kind of how we got there along the way throughout this presentation. But just to give you a snapshot, our reserve for economic uncertainty is approximately $11.5 million. That's about $1.17 million higher than what we estimated in June. And if you remember, when we came to you with the adoption for the 2122 school year budget, we also had in that budget document, our estimated actials for 202021. And that's kind of our last best guess of how we think we'll end the year. So in that, we had estimated that our reserve would be about $1.17 million left, less, which I will explain in more detail as I mentioned. So overall, if you're comparing to 201920, our reserve for economic un- um, our reserve for economic uncertainty from, um, the end of the prior fiscal year has gone up about 3.4 million dollars. And along the way, we, we saw this happening. We had a lot of savings in 1920 and then again, we continue to see some savings as it, as it really related to COVID. It was really, um, related to COVID and some of the, um, additional funding that we received that let us offset some expenditures in our unrestricted general fund. So at second interim and estimated actuals, we had estimated that our, um, our reserve was going to increase about 2.23 million. And then since then, as I mentioned, we had additional savings which increased that another 1.1 million. Going, just looking at some of the, um, the detail. And everything really is comparison to how we closed the books compared to our estimated actuals that we had in June. So compared to estimated actuals, our overall revenue has increased by about six, a little over six, almost $603,000. Uh, we did see a slight increase to our property taxes of $101,000. Um, that was unanticipated. But then we also had a decrease in our, uh, RDA residual property tax of 40,000. So a net of 60 there. Um, we saw some, a decrease in our funding for Medi-Cal administrative activities. Um, a lot of pluses and minuses here. Saw an increase to our lottery estimates. Um, and that, those new estimates just came out really in June, July. Um, we had a decrease in our SWP and CTIG monies of 482,000. And that sounds substantial, but we have awards and essentially we have multi-years often to spend those. And if we don't, we will budget them. And then if we don't spend it all, we can't recognize that revenue and we bring it over to the next fiscal year. We did see also an increase with our, um, expanded learning grants and in-person instruction grants. And at the time of budget development and estimated actuals, we didn't really know the timing of when we'd be receiving that. So we budgeted a portion of our ELO grants. And then later, um, just kind of made some adjustments. So the net change in that was 272,000. The bulk of ELO grants will be recognized in the 2021, 22 year. And then of course, um, one large change was our bus grants that we received. And we had taken those to the board, I think, a couple of months. Um, a couple of different board meetings, but the last one I think was in April, um, where we received a total of three grants for purchases of three different buses. On the expenditure side, an overall expenditure decrease of 380,000 um, throughout the entire general fund. Um, and this really consists of a bunch of pluses and minuses. A big plus was the increase to salaries of almost $900,000 from estimated actuals. Most of that is attributed to the one-time $2,500 payment that we made to all employees. And, um, if you recall, at estimated actuals, we had included, um, just as an estimate because we had not settled salary negotiations yet, a 2% ongoing, but then also a 1% off-schedule one-time payment, which had a value of about $400,000 or so. The one-time payment that we actually made, um, of $2,500 was about 1.5 million. And, um, essentially, since we had already budgeted about 430, that covered portion of that. And then we had some additional savings in staffing that offset the difference there, the variance between 1.1 million and 900. Um, most of that was just extra duty that we'd had budgeted that we didn't use or sub-cost. Um, and we saw some savings there. So another large decrease in expenditures was materials and supplies. A lot of this was just unused allocations in all the different programs, including Measure A, donations. Even in our, you know, fiscal office, we didn't spend everything that we normally do. Um, I think mo- most districts are seeing that. They just didn't, didn't spend like they normally would in a year. Um, transportation was another big savings that we experienced. They didn't purchase all the tires, materials, repair parts and fuel that they normally would in a given year. Generally, transportation spends their entire budget. Sometimes we even have to add at the end of the year if we've had a lot of additional, um, trip cost.
Did your mic go out?
Yep. I, I must have hit it off. Sorry about that. Um, decrease of about $670,000. Um, overall, a bunch of different categories, um, including, um, some reductions to our routine maintenance that we didn't fully spend. That also will be carried forward to next year. Um, also Title I programs, same story. We didn't spend it all, so we get to carry it over to next year. But we have to, we can't recognize it in the, in the current fiscal year. And another large one was athletics. We did trim down the budget throughout the course of the year because we weren't having the full athletic programs that we normally do. So we trimmed that down. However, we still had left some amount budgeted for not only, um, official fees, entry fees, but also, um, a big portion of it was for athletic transportation that as we really got going in the spring, um, we thought we would spend a lot. We were looking, and actually, um, uh, scheduling a lot of charter buses. And those are very expensive. A lot of times those can be $5,000 to $7,000 a trip, depending on where we're going. We didn't end up spending all that, so we saved about $182,000 there. Capital outlay was increased because of those three buses that we purchased that I mentioned, $380,000. And then a really positive note, um, our food service, um, contribution reduced. And this was a result of increased meal participation. We received more federal and state reimbursements than we anticipated. In addition, we also received a kind of a federal subsidance of $75,000, um, which was just to kind of help with the COVID relief situation. There's just a quick table on the overall revenues showing 80.8 million dollars. Again, kind of the breakdown, and as we know, property taxes is our largest share, although you'll see state and federal are definitely showing a bigger percentage than they normally do. And that's due to the COVID-related funds. General fund expenditures, once again, 74.7 million. And then again, the breakdown by percentages. Still, staff salaries and benefits is still our largest expenditure, as would be expected. Um, obviously, we have some percentages that look a little differently, particularly with materials and supplies and services that really were related to mitigation and COVID measures. Those percentages are a little bit higher this year than we normally see. And then finally, looking at our fund balance. As I mentioned before, our reserve for economic uncertainty is about 11.5 million dollars, 11,534,000 dollars. Um, that is an increase of 1.1 million. And just to explain kind of how we got there, I already talked about some of the savings that we experienced. Um, but just in a nutshell here, our increase to property taxes, a net $60,000 increase there. Um, we also had the reduced contribution to food service of 161,000. Our overall transportation savings this year, um, from estimated actuals to now was about 248,000 dollars. And then again, the athletics transportation savings, 183,000 dollars almost. And then last, um, we had that offset from the one-time payment that we made that we're able to essentially move from our unrestricted general fund to our in-person instruction grants that we received from the state late last year. Um, so that was an overall additional savings, net savings of about 200,000 dollars. So all of that kind of adds up. Uh, these are all things that we consider one-time savings. We don't expect to experience that on an ongoing basis. Um, it's really just a sign of the times related to just some of the unique, um, experiences that we had during the COVID pandemic. And then looking forward, um, changes that we have to make to our 2021, 22 budget. Um, some of the major changes is obviously to our revenue side with our property taxes. And at the time, uh, we adopted our budget, we were planning on about a four and a half percent increase to our assessed valuation, which translates similarly to our property tax increase estimates. And our AV actually luckily came in at 6.7%. So that's an additional 2.2%, um, which equates to about 1.15 million dollars in additional property tax revenue. So we'll be making those adjustments to our overall 2122 budget very shortly. Um, along with some other, um, changes that we made, we have added some staffing. We've had some other revenue sources change a little bit. So all those changes will be occurring between now and our first interim report, which will be presented in December. Another thing we have to look at, um, look forward to, I guess, is our SR3 funding. We're required to put together expenditure plan. Um, just the strings tied with almost every piece of COVID or state funding, COVID relief-related, um, funding that we received. There's some form of reporting or, um, plan that we need to present. So we'll be bringing that to you in October. Um, still trying to figure out all the pieces on that. And then good news with the budget adoption at the state level. The budget trailer bill included a reduction to the unemployment insurance cost. Um, at budget adoption, we were told that it would be a 1.23% um, cost for all payroll. The governor has, had adjusted that down to about a half a percent. So that savings to us is about 250 to 300,000 dollars. And we'll be making that adjustment as well. And then finally, there are some additional monies that we'll most likely be seeing with, um, expanded learning grants that were, um, approved through the state budget trailer bill, as well as what's called pre-K grants. And that is related to the transitional kindergarten for all program that was approved by the state in, in the 2122 budget. So, um, we're still waiting on more information from that. That will be coming forward soon. And then as I mentioned before, we did have some additional staffing that we added after budget adoption. And that's about it. Was there any questions?
That's all. That's a lot, Todd. Thank you so much. Um, I, I always think that your introductory section in each of these is so helpful in understanding what's going on. So I really appreciate that.
Um, I'm no longer surprised at how well these are done, but I sure appreciate it. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Nope. I think your team did a really good job with your leadership.
Yep, thank you. It did occur to me, you know, we hear, we heard a lot of rhetoric this year about record revenues. And of course, we had many one-time revenues related to COVID. We also had record expenditures. Um, so, and that, that will, we'll break, we'll have a record every year by the nature of what we do, of how we're funded. So, um, but we have a lot of one-time things going on that I appreciate how much extra work and time and effort it is to deal with keeping those, um, accounted for correctly. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's been, it's been difficult to track and just maintain and figure out how we can spend them and how we can't. And, um, you know, a lot of these funds that we're receiving, you know, really are for forward planning as well and trying to figure out, um, how much additional support you might need as that, that were, as a result of the impact of COVID-19 because it's not just a one-year problem. It's something that we need to look forward to addressing as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Todd. And to your staff. Okay, board, we have, uh, two more items. The first is we do have the board policy related to civility. I did not see any questions in the homework. Was that one that didn't get in? So can we move this to the consent agenda for next time?
Don't, don't we need to have action on the, on?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we need action on the unaudited? Okay. So, but can I finish that thought? Can we move this to consent, you guys? Are we good with that? Okay. And then would someone like to move approval of the unaudited actuals?
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, 2021 unaudited actual report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And I'll note that we have no public, so I did not call for public comment. And Lupita would know, let me know if I had any electronically. So last item is comments of board members. Kirsten, you want to start?
Um, I just, um, wanted to share that I did go to, uh, the first day of school at Kings Beach Elementary. And I just loved seeing the littles in the classroom. They were so excited. Whenever you asked them, I asked them if they were happy to be there. They're like, yeah! And we got to fifth grade and they're like, eh! Uh, but it was really fun to just see the first day of school again. And, um, also last, last night, night before, I attend, last night, uh, North Tahoe High School's, um, uh, back-to-school night, uh, both as a parent and a board member. And, uh, that was super fun too. And it was nice to see the teachers, you know, just, it's a long day for them. So it was nice to see them with their A-game and game face on. And it was really great. I was just happy that we're back to school. Please, everybody stay masked up so we can stay open. Thank you. That's all I got.
I also attended the open house last night for the North Tahoe High School. And, um, I, it was fun. It was good. Great to see the teachers. And, um, just enjoyed being back on site. Um, I haven't gone to any games yet, so I'm slacking off on that. I need to get on that for the sporting activities. I went to first day of school at Tahoe Lake and was, um, a bus duty. No one got hit. I was the bus, uh, whatever you call it, crossing walk. I focused. I did not leave my post for only a few minutes. Um, but no one got hit on my watch, which was huge. Um, and then I spent the day with my friend Ingrid at her classroom. And, um, and then just walked through the, I just walked through the school. It was great. So yeah, and it was a good day. A lot of my nursery school kids are there, which was so fun. And I only cried a little bit, so it was good.
Nice job. I, I missed the first day of school. I spent 11 days driving to and from Colorado and dropping my youngest off to college. But I think I'm going to be in the classroom starting Monday, so exciting. Yay.
I'd just like to say this has been the first really up-good-news board meeting we've had in, in a long time. All the presentations were great and there wasn't, uh, anything that was very upsetting at all. And just for the fun of it, um, I'm going to tell you about my summer reading program. I've been reading Lord of the Flies. I think I was supposed to have done that 60 years ago or something like that. And, uh, I, I found it, uh, depressing. Yeah, and Catcher in the Rye, which, which is, uh, I think I'll be able to grow up now that I'm understanding how I was as a kid. Thank you.